All right, I'd like to call the the Chapua Public Library September Board Meeting to order at 7:32 PM. Welcome, everybody. We have a we have a good agenda, a couple of exciting things going on today. We're first gonna stand for the pledge though. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Do we have anyone in? So for public comment, if anyone wants to use the raise hand feature. Okay, I don't currently see any hands raised. Oh, oh, I, yep. Thank you. Margaret, you have the floor. Margaret, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. I have two points and then some suggestions, and I ask that I be allowed the time to state them. They won't take long. The first point, at the August 16th regular meeting, I brought up that the hiring of the interim director who started on August 1 had not happened in a public meeting, which means it appears not to have been in compliance with the New York State Open Meeting Law. Since that time, this board has continued making key decisions on library business behind the scenes, including deciding on both the permanent director and a new trustee. Word has already been circulating in the community that a permanent director had been selected and is relocating from upstate. That means an offer authorized by at least three of you must have been made prior to tonight and accepted by that person. At the August 29 special meeting, this board announced a new trustee had been chosen, which is another decision requiring the approval of at least three of you. If the trustee is also the same person being added as a signatory in the library bank accounts, which I believe is the case, tonight's packet says that signatory became effective as of September 1, 19 days ago. Why would this resolution be retroactive unless that trustee had already been approved? So I reiterate the point that I made back in August, making decisions on key issues such as the interim library director, the library director, and a replacement library trustee outside of a public meeting is not just inappropriate. It may well be illegal under the open meeting law. It is also not in compliance with the library's own bylaws, which state, quote, "All actions and decisions that the trustees shall take place at a regular or special meeting of the board duly called." The board may close a meeting for an executive session and take actions as specified under New York State Open Government Laws, end quote. It really is stating the obvious to say that this board is obliged to follow its own bylaws as well as state law. Here's the second point. Since July 1 of this year, the requirement for public bodies to have remote meetings have tightened up. Among other things, all public bodies, including this board, are now required to take certain steps in order to have remote participation by members. Two of the requirements are that every public body must formally adopt a policy on remote participation first. And once that is done, in order to have a duly convened public meeting, there still must be at least a quorum, which in the case of this board means three members of the board in one physical place or in separate physical places, all of which must be open to where the public can attend. This board has not been in compliance with these requirements for some of its meetings. For example, at the August 16th regular meeting, only two board members were physically present in one place. Two participated remotely, one was not on video, which is also not permitted. The special meeting called on August 29th had all members participating remotely. And the same may be true of the September 2 meeting, but so far I don't see that video online yet, so I can't be sure about that. This means that each of those meetings was not valid under the current law in effect since July 1. And thus, the votes taken at those meetings are also invalid, including the August 16 vote to supposedly retroactively appoint an interim director. Moreover, the minutes of the August 16 meeting, which are in today's packet for a vote, do not reflect that no quorum was physically present in one place. That is just misleading. There are no minutes.
Margaret, one second. You're at three minutes, but we do have people here. I'm sure you'd be willing to yield your three minutes.
Well, I got one last sentence.
Three more minutes. Go for it.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know what you were saying for a minute. I appreciate that. There are no minutes for the September 2 meeting, special meeting in the packet, even though those minutes are also up for acceptance tonight, and no meeting at all for the August 29 special meeting. So here are the steps that I suggest to this board. I urge you to clean up all the mistakes so far and don't continue to make them. I suggest the following. Learn, number one, learn the details of the remote meeting requirements in effect since July 1. Decide if you want to pursue that option, and if so, follow the required steps. The same goes for the open meeting law itself. Learn what is required in terms of public meetings and follow the requirements going forward. There can be an actual financial cost to not complying with state law. By that, I mean this board can be sued in an Article 78 proceeding for such noncompliance. And if the plaintiff wins, the library may be ordered to pay both its own legal fees, of course, but also ordered to pay the plaintiff's fee. Number two, create a detailed list of the invalid votes and convene a special meeting with all of you in one physical place and take valid votes. Number three, put a proper agendas and packets. Recent agendas, including today's, have numerous errors and deficiencies. Just one example, at least the last two regular meeting agendas have been called meeting minutes, not agendas. There are also two different agendas posted for tonight's meeting, one a standalone document and one at the front of the packet. Such inconsistencies are confusing for the public and also will create confusion in the board's records, which are required to be maintained under the law. Number four, make sure packets are complete. Today's packet, for example, does not contain any minutes for the September 2 special meeting, even though the approval of those meetings is to happen tonight. The points I made today all go to the public's right to know, which is one of the underpinnings of our democracy. I assume each of you believes in that concept, but the concept is worth nothing if it isn't lived up to in practice. In addition, as elected officials and fiduciaries, you're responsible for an annual budget over $3 million. And taxpayers have the right to expect that you will fulfill those rules carefully and in full compliance with the law. I thank you very much for listening to me tonight.
Thank you. Um, I do appreciate everything you're saying, and it's it's actually warms my heart a little that other people care about open meetings law and understand the importance of following it. I believe we have been in compliance, however, to your point, we'll go back and we'll make sure. And if there is something we need to correct for, we will, and certainly we will listen to your feedback and the spirit of it, and anything that we can do better, we will. We're here. We want to be transparent. I think it's worth acknowledging that I am the only board member who's been on this board prior to July. So we have a lot of new board members that that we are all doing our very best, and I would say that that it's a privilege to serve here, and if there are errors, they're mine. And I'll be the first person exiting this board in July. But certainly, we are 100% on the same page with your sentiments. So thank you very much for your comments and for your interest and continued participation, because it is it is really, really nice to have your your focus. And although we didn't hear from you when we were looking for to fill positions, we always are looking for more people to be involved, and if it's something that you have more time for, we're here and we would we would welcome you to approach us to do more, but certainly what you've done already is fantastic. Thank you. Um, so are there any other? And can you elevate Joe? Okay, and then if there's anyone else who would like to talk, now would be your chance to raise your hand.
I just need to tell Chantel that Bill needs an invitation to the meeting.
Okay, um, you know, this board has been operating with through a pandemic and with various leadership configurations. I think we're doing pretty well. I I the lack of the minutes for the September 2 would be my fault, and I'm I'm not, I have to see if we technically, well, I don't want to get into the technical, but when you did we post a video for the second, Chantel? September 2nd? Yeah, we posted that video, correct? Yeah, so I believe the video is serving for the public's safe part of open meeting law. When you post a video, you have longer minutes, because the video serves as your minutes to the public, so. But generally, we always do follow up with minutes, so I will make sure that we get that done. We'll take that off of this agenda. Um, and so the August 19 minutes, there was one one thing on there. I noticed the start time on the meeting. I think we we, I don't think we started at 7:19. So I didn't catch it earlier. Does anyone else have any other edits or we're good with the minutes with that one? Great. So the minutes for the 19th are we're gonna make one one edit on the time of the start. Just make sure we got that right or switch it. And then we have, so our sorry.
August 16.
Oh, yeah, sorry, August, right, okay. Been a long summer, you know, a lot of boards don't meet in August. If you could practice to adopt for next year. So now we're gonna go. I think all of our favorite item on here is to appoint our fifth trustee. I know the community. The the community has been really great. A lot of people came forward to express interest. And Dana, you happen to be uniquely qualified with a background working in budgeting for the New York Public Library, amongst other awesome qualifications and.
Spinning.
It's spinning, it's spinning. What if it's a portrait spinning?
And another change will be the appointment of officers, which will include secretary, who will oversee the minutes.
Right, exactly, yes, yes.
Which we lost.
Yep, yep. I'm, I'm, yeah. It's fine. I'll take the hit. It is what it is. It's not, open meetings law is complex, and we're okay, we're.
I don't have to go.
Does it not respond?
So. Well, technically, the hybrid aspect is less important than us being in this room. The public could come here. I don't know how that works at 8 o'clock once the door is closed, which is something we should all kind of talk about at some point. But
we could leave these doors open, right?
Yeah, we could potentially leave those doors open.
At least the point that they're not tortured anymore.
Yeah, no, I did. Yeah, so let's. We won't have it on video, but but okay, let's. Let's, let's, let's take a vote. I would like to make a motion to appoint Dana, how do you pronounce your last name? Will, the way it's written, okay, Dana Will, to to the partial term vacated, the partial term ending, does anyone know on that? That's 2020, 2024. The partial term, oh, 2025, actually, 2025. But you're so the the partial term that you're filling is for Sho Ray, who was, who would have been, yeah, 2025, 2025.
Online, it says June 2026.
2026, okay.
I don't know that that's, I don't know that that's.
See, I'm 23. You would be 24, you would be 25, so 26 is correct, okay. So to the to the partial term that ends in 2026, although the way this works is it's you stay through May for us. Uh huh, okay. All right, so, May 2026. Do I have a second for my motion? Jennifer Faye is seconding all any discussion who well, we're just so happy. All in favor? I, okay, it's unanimous. Okay, so, um. Okay. Okay. Now we might have to wait to, we're gonna, okay, so we're being recorded. Okay, thank you all. Sorry for the technical difficulties. The board took, made a motion and took a vote and appointed Dana as our fifth trustee. We then administered the oath of office and had it notarized, so we can send that up to Albany and or the county. And that concludes our board business. So later this evening, we'll actually be meeting to talk about our our skill sets and our comfort level with the different positions. And we will be filling the secretary, vice president, and finance officer roles, which will also help us with our ongoing fiduciary obligations here. So at this point, we had just, we had just moved on to look at the holidays, so we're bear with us, we're jumping around in the agenda a little. We're gonna look at holidays and then we'll appoint our, we'll we'll see if we have a new director to point. So for holidays, I was saying, this is an excerpt from the employee manual. These holidays, you know, they impact the the total time off, the the salary, everything. Um, there's a new federal holiday, Juneteenth, and we want to recognize it. So it's an incremental holiday that we're adding to the calendar of approved paid or days that were closed and the related impact. So I would like to make a motion that we approve the new holiday list. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Jennifer, seconding that. All in favor? I, okay, so we have approved the holidays list, so I I, that is done, and I'm sure that Marge will take care of what needs to happen internally that goes along with that. And at some point in the not-too-distant future, we will be looking at the employee manual. I had gone to training and a couple other staff members have been trained. It's it's something that will work, will collectively work with with our new director and make sure we're current, because there have been some things that have changed. It should get refreshed. Okay, um, so. While I was extremely excited to bring Dana on board, I think all of us are super excited as well, because we have a new director. So we, um, we are here tonight to officially appoint our new director, so. I'll make the motion, someone can second it, and then we'll have a little discussion before we vote. So I would like to make a motion to appoint Robert Conrad to the provisional appointment of library director three effective November 7 at an annual salary of $130,000 a year with an additional one-time $5,000 payment upon employment. Do I have a second? Pam is gonna second that, okay. So I think before we vote, I would just like to share, maybe, do you want to share with the public a little bit of the process we went through to get here? And and why we're so excited?
Sure, so initially, you the way looking for a library three director is that we go through the civil service of Westchester County. And because they did not have enough candidates for us, we were allowed to look elsewhere. So we posted on the American Library Association website, of which we interviewed about eight people and really very, very interesting people who applied and wanted the job. And Bob really stood out to us. He is a future-thinking, innovative man who's been in the library world for two decades now, and he really he brought a lot of, a lot of excitement and and joy to his experience in the library. What he'd like to, what he'd like to bring, he'd like to bring all of that joy and excitement to Chapel Qua Library. And he he just is a lover of of libraries, of people, of communities, and we were so excited to offer him the job, of which he so excitedly accepted.
It's really an amazing opportunity. It's not often that we go outside of civil service to recruit for the library, just because it's such a great place to work that we typically have, you know, have have these long lists that we're that we go off of. In this situation, we were bringing in someone who has a lot to offer, and I think I wouldn't be surprised if you know, we see his impact resonate throughout the Westchester Library system, and even maybe with as civil service looks to evolve, I'm sure he will have a very nice, healthy relationship there as well. So it's, it it really is going to be very different for us here in Chapel Qua. We're going to get someone who has brings such a wealth of experience from many different places, Chicago, Central New York, and 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 we're we're ready to support him, so we're we're welcoming him with open arms, and he'll be here in November.
And one other point, we have, we solicit a lot of staff feedback and participation. We had two members of staff on the search committee, and we put out a survey asking, you know, what people were looking for, what characteristics, and he passed his interview in person, everyone seemed to love flying calls, so that was great.
He's also very much a community person. He's looking forward to working with the school district, with our community, and and getting to know all the people that live here.
Excellent. All right, so without further ado, all in favor? Unanimous, all right. So that's that's the, just going to be incredible for everybody, staff, us, community. Huge opportunity. Um, all right, so that leads us into, we have a director signatory resolution that we, did we, did we write this? We said, I don't know why we said effective September 1. Can we amend the resolution and then we'll, because it really should just be today, the 20th.
So would you like me to make a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I make a motion to amend the resolution to change the date, the signature date to September 20th, 2022, from September.
So you're at, the motion you'll make is to approve this resolution
Okay.
with the amended.
Okay, so I, okay, so I make a motion to approve this resolution with the amended date of September 20th, 2022.
Right, so whereas the Chapel Qua Public Library Board of Trustees has a fiduciary responsibility for all library funds, whereas the library has chosen Valley Bank to provide banking services. Be it resolved, the Chapel Qua Central School District Public Library of trustees has approved the following. We're adding authorized signatory effective September 25th. Dana Will, so I'm seconding your motion. All in favor? I, all right, so. I don't actually, I never sat here when we did, did you guys vote on your motion? I don't think it matters. It's just an interesting point of like, do you abstain from that?
Oh, when you make a motion.
Right, because we just made a motion to add her to the bank. And normally, I don't, I don't think I've ever sat at the table and made the motion with the person, so I'm just thinking, I don't, but it doesn't matter. It passes with whether you're in or out, we're unanimous, okay. All right, so we, so that's really helpful, Dana, because we have lots of checks to sign, yes, and we always need two signatures, so no check ever leaves this building without having been reviewed by the director, by the treasurer, and by us, and also with two signatures. So that's how we manage that. And the checks do need to go out, and there are certain ones that are more time sensitive. This is just by way of trustee training. The, so we have certain checks that are required to be sent, like when we fund the retirement accounts, you can't sit on that money, you have to get it to them. So if depending on the timing, it may be that we're, you know, that we really need whoever's local to town to come down and deal deal with the signature. So I appreciate you being available for that task as well. Okay, so we did holidays. I am now going to officially discharge the search committee. Thank you, thank you. Thank you to the staff that participated, Marge and Robin, and and everybody who helped participate in that process. To your point, the surveys that everybody sends back and coming to the library to meet with Bob when he was here. All really, really great. All the staff helped hire him more, as much as we did, but probably more, because you guys showed up and convinced him that he wants to be here leading you, so thank you. Okay.
Liz, if I may interject, I know I speak for the entire board, but thankfully, she's staying on through the transition and was part of the search committee. But Martha Alcott has, as we were saying prior to the meeting, been a godsend as a room director. So the community should know that.
Yes, absolutely. I'll admit, I almost cried telling Martha the same the other day. It really is a, it it, it is a huge library, and Bob will have a very big job. And and Martha has been doing an incredible job of just making sure that that, you know, that this library is in as great a shape as our last director left it, and that we're, you know, ready for Bob when he gets here. And we really, there's been a lot of things that we've been pushing forward on, and time is never our friend. We really appreciate your help with everything, so I'm very happy to be here. All right, and I think we'll still have one more meeting together. Okay, um, so I I think I've covered pretty much everything I wanted to share in terms of my I think I've covered pretty much everything I wanted to share, um, in terms of my, um. In terms of my president's report, so anything, um. I think basically the public should be seeing changes on the property, oh, I know what I, I had one thing. I wanted to, um, recognize Larry and thank him for restoring the, um, sculpture. Um, who's a famous artist that?
Robert Gooden.
Robert Gooden now donated this, this sculpture to us and it was in disrepair. And Larry made it shine again, and if you haven't driven. By the library, I encourage you just take an extra loop through the front, just so you can check out the beautiful restored sculpture. Cause it's stunning, it's really incredible, uh, really great, thank you Larry. Um, and Martha, everybody who was involved in that. Okay, so Martha, I think you have a report for us this evening.
I do, um, and I'd like to start by saying we had another successful Community Day on Saturday. The friends shared our booth and we had free books and DVDs and crafts for teens and kids. And we promoted our programs and services and had people sign up for library cards. It was a really great day. Be out there in the community, um. And the theater is almost ready for in-person programs again, we, um. The last thing we have to do, uh, David will finish repainting. The, the floor under the stairs, um, I mean, under the chairs, um, tomorrow. Uh, and then we're having our first big author talk tomorrow. Linda Collins Luegman is coming, she's a local author who's going to, uh, launch her book tomorrow night. Uh, The Matchmaker's Gift, so, and the theater is actually ready. For this, and you know, we get, we're getting back to our programs in person again, which feels really good. Uh, and the AV equipment, lights and microphones as well have been prepared for use with training scheduled. So the staff, everybody who uses these facilities will be trained to use those. And let's see. WLS will be coming at the end of the month to install three new computers we've contracted for. And we've also purchased a new laptop for Joan Keun and a new Mac for patron and reference use. And the library is now circulating hotspots, we have five hotspots. Um, and we're also ready Chromebooks to, uh, for circulation as well. Of course, really Chinese Club has a photo exhibit in the library for the Moon Festival. And their, uh, their purpose is to spread awareness of Chinese culture and holidays. It's a wonderful exhibit, I encourage you to take a look at it. Other current exhibits celebrates Hispanic Heritage Month, Band Books Week and National Voter Registration Day. The library's Equity Committee met to discuss ways to track programs and materials for diversity. Something that we're, we're all figuring out together. And members of the committee will meet tomorrow with the Newcastle Committee on Race Equity and. And inclusion, to discuss ways the library can collaborate with and support this new group going forward. I do have at this point four personnel recommendations.
Can I ask a question, did Cree approach us or we approached them for tomorrow's meeting?
Um, I believe Robin Friedman reached out.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and yeah, we, our equity group meets once a month, so it's an ongoing thing.
Yep.
Yeah. So I have four personnel recommendations. I recommend the board approve the reappointment of Dilara Higgins to the position of part-time library clerk. Effective nine-one twenty-twenty-two at the rate of seventeen fifty-two an hour. I recommend the board approve the appointment of Eliza Fink to the position of page effective nine-nine twenty-twenty-two. At the rate of fifteen forty-five an hour. I recommend the board approve the appointment of Cassidy Weddell to the position of computer page effective nine-twenty-one twenty-twenty-two. At the rate of fifteen seventy-one an hour. And I recommend the board approve increasing the rate of two pages, Ben Fine and Erin Song. From fifteen forty-one an hour to fifteen forty-five an hour retroactive to nine-six twenty-twenty-two.
So, um, we'll do those under personnel actions, but I just wanted to. To point out for the sake of the rest of the board, um, Ben and Aaron were just receiving a few cents less. And they were just hired, so we're just putting all the pages that came on at the same time, at the same, um, pay scale. Uh, and, um, obviously we're hiring, you know, we have some hires here too. Um, but I just, that's, that's that little, little nuance, um, we try to be very fair and equitable here. And so, um, sorry? I'm not sure exactly how, but it really doesn't matter, it's just a matter like. It's a couple cents on the dollar and we just wanna make sure everyone that's in that same. Position is making that same amount of money, so they're getting the benefit of moving up a few cents. Um, in our world, pages work the fewest hours for the least salary. So it's the consequence on our budget is not, is negligible, but, um, it's nice to be fair. And not to have little things, even if it's awkward for us to adjust, alright, um. Okay, so does anyone have any questions for Martha or will be able to do these appointments later in personnel and? Okay, thank you, I, I, I heard Community Day was a big success. Yeah, no, we had great weather and, um, so yeah, no, it's, we appreciate you guys being out there for that. Um, really great, okay, um, so we, we still have Joe? Yes, we have Joe, okay, Joe, we're gonna go into finances now.
Okay, I'm here.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
Um, you submitted your treasurer's report somewhere in our, yes.
Yeah, and I just wanna bring to everyone's attention, uh, the, I, I, there's an error in that report. The, the, in the last paragraph, I made mention of the, um. The, the, the operating surplus for, for the June twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two fiscal. Uh, as being two, two-hundred-and-eleven thousand, uh, it's actually three-hundred-and-five thousand, I, I, I. Erroniously picked up the, uh, the number from the variance column as opposed to the, the actual. Uh, result, uh, so. So of the, of the three-hundred-and-five, ninety of it has, has already been moved over as, as was budgeted to, to capital. So, so the, the residual surplus is about two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand. Which the board has the discretion to, you know, keep in operating surplus or to move to any. Designation they, they choose to do.
Great, um, thank you, Joe, and we will continue to have conversations. Obviously, this is the first time you guys have gone through the close of a fiscal year and then we have to sit down and decide if we wanted. What we do with that, um, surplus, it's a good problem to have. It's sort of an artificial surplus because there's been several things that are going to come do that weren't in the new budget. So, um, it's nice to know that, that, that money is there. For example, um, external to the property, we have, uh, we have the, uh, water feature in the front. And, um, we came to find out that it had been a very long time since it had been maintained. Um, now we know what the maintenance cycle should be and we will put that into our budget. But for this go-around, it needed to be dredged and cleaned. Um, there was no way around it, but it was an un, un, unbudgeted expense. So we'll have to, as a group, um, probably have some work sessions that are public. So the public can come join us if they want, um, to, to talk through, uh, talk through budgeting more. And, and, and to kind of, uh, make sure that we really, uh. Articulate to Bob categories that we want to spend in, so they make it into the budget. Because I think, um, that, you know, that's also, you know, we have to make sure that, um, I wanna make sure that when. He's gonna get here in November, we owe the community a budget in the winter, you know, it's not a long time. So I want all of us to be thinking as a board and trying to get ready. So that when he gets here, we know what our priorities are, we know what we think of the last budget. And we're sort of ready to hit the ground and, and rebuild that. Because one of the challenges also is that that budget, um, it's, it's a spreadsheet, it's unwieldy. And it's not necessarily a best practice, so, um, you know, hopefully Bob will have thoughts. And, and how he wants to move forward, um, but we can also do some research and come to that conversation ready. Uh, cause that'll be one of the first tasks that we as a group have to, um, go through. Uh, okay, so, um, in terms of. Questions for Joe, I, I, I just wanted to point out. Um, thank you for calling attention to the insurance thing, if anyone, um. For some of our newer board members in our capital fund, we actually are showing a, um. A round tarred claims management insurance claim, so that's, um. That is money that actually came in, um, and. So, so, so we were actually paid back by the insurance company. The reason Joe called attention to it is because, um, we just have to make sure, uh.
Joe, you still there?
I'm here, uh, yeah, Bill, how you doing?
Good, and you? I guess it's just us two.
Yeah, you know, this happened before, um, they, you know, although the video was lost. I wound up, you know, leaving the meeting and then coming back in, but they, they were having some technical difficulties, so.
Yeah, I have the same thing, I went in and out about three times.
Yeah.
Alright, I guess we'll wait for him.
Uh, yeah, I'll wait a few minutes, we'll see.
Yep.
Capital Fund, I pointed out one thing on that, um, and then, I don't know if you guys had any other thoughts? We're in good shape, we've reviewed the capital fund. Um, and then we need to approve the September bills. Can I have a motion for the September, for the September bills?
Make a motion to approve the September bills.
Alright, do I have a second? Pam's seconding, all in favor? I, good, alright, Jennifer, are you?
Very clever, I apologize.
Unanimous? Okay, um, so we have approved the September bills unanimously. Okay, we are up to our committee reports, um. Jennifer, Building and Grounds, if you can abbreviate it just for the sake of time, thank you. Um, will Bill be speaking?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, Joe, I'm sorry, I think we, we finished all of the, the financials. Um, I had asked you a question while you were on mute about whether you had heard back about the insurance check.
The, the brown yard matter?
So that will remain a question, that's fine. Or is it a volume issue on our end?
Yeah, so what, what was the question? Hello? Can you hear me?
His box is silent. Can you repeat?
Yeah, I, what was the question?
Alright, unfortunately, we're having, we're continuing to have some technical difficulties. Um, but Joe, thank you for coming this evening, we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, alright.
Joe said thanks for having me. See you next time. Okay, alright, um, did you want to? I don't, I, well, I'm wondering like, if we can't hear Bill.
Can you hear me now? No, I guess not, hello? Hello, hello?
Okay.
You heard me?
We did.
Good, do I keep after yelling or did you hear me, can you hear me normally?
We can hear you, this is great.
Okay, good, very good. So, uh, a question, uh, we are now, Jennifer, I, I am directing this to you. We want to rebuild the snow removal contract, cause we can't just give it to a vendor, we have to bid it. So do you want me to start that process?
Yes, I think we should begin that process.
Okay, so if we want to make it happen by November first, uh, the board will have to, uh, send the current vendor. A letter by the first of October. I don't know if that would be the director, the director signed the contract, so I guess it would be the director. I'll, I'll work with you tomorrow Martha to draft that.
Yes. So, so the letter will be to give them thirty days notice that we are reevaluating? Or we are actually terminating?
We're terminating.
And we're terminating. So just, just, just because I wanna make sure we get this right. And I'm not, and I'm not, I'm just. And I'm not, and I'm not, I'm just timing wise. Was there snow removal a problem for us last winter? Or how do we feel about that aspect of their?
I thought he was acceptable. He wasn't absolutely great. I've worked with this vendor, uh, for a long time, and I think he's got too many irons in the fire now. Uh, and I think a, a new hand might be better. But as I, I wrote earlier, we can't just give it to somebody. We have to do a competitive bid. We can invite who we want to bid.
Right. Absolutely. Okay, I just want to make sure that we didn't have someone that was struggling with the landscaping side of things. But that had done a, you know, an outstanding phenomenal job in the winter. But it sounds like we're ready to part ways. We're comfortable with Martha doing the, the, the work of that in terms of giving them notice.
Well, my preference would be to obtain proposals
Right.
that appear to be sufficiently competitive for either equal or better array of services. Um, at equal or better pricing.
Right.
Which I think we can, because of the, uh, conversations Bill, Martha and I have already had. I think we can turn that around pretty quickly. It would require a special meeting. And at that point, when we've got bird in hand, uh, in terms of a quality alternative proposal, then we can terminate the contract.
Yeah, so you, we may then, uh, we can discuss it, uh, in the future. But we probably want to make the effective date of the new contract then, uh, December 1st rather than November 1st. Because you have to give the incumbent 30 days notice and we won't get prices back before that.
Well, I, I, right, I, I think the challenge is not to let go of the vendor.
Yes.
Before we know that there's a, there's an alternative that we like better, that's of the appropriate price point. So, um, I don't know if, do we tell the current vendor that we're, do we, you know, as a courtesy, let them know, but not do the termination letter? Or what do you want to do in this interim time?
There's no contractual obligation to do so. So.
Yeah, he, whether we terminate him or not, he has a obligation.
I think, Bill, at this point, we would, we would be more comfortable that we might have a month where we're paying and not, you know, and using a new provider. Rather than get rid of a provider before we have the new one lined up, because it is such a critical service.
Okay.
So let's, let's hold off on, um, obviously if they watch our, our meeting here, they would know that we're contemplating our option.
They certainly do not watch the meeting.
Well, I, I, as appropriate, we can ask them, you know, if we want to talk to them again as part of the bidding, that's fine. Um, I'll leave that, those details to you guys to work out offline.
Well, if I'm terminating someone, I don't usually let them bid again.
Okay, great. Well, then there's the answer. So when we have whoever we want to replace them, we'll do the notification.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, um, that works for me.
Okay, very good. Uh, the stream, I think he did an excellent job as well as the, uh, the water feature. The water feature, he did not nearly go as deep, but we didn't specify that as the other vendor. But I think if we put it on an annual or, or every second year cycle, I think it will be fine. Uh, it was a lot less noticeable, the work he did. The other vendor actually got a, uh, an excavator down in the pond after he de-watered it. Uh, that's how much material he removed. But like I said, it's been filling up for 10 years, so if we put it on a schedule, I think we'll be very good. And I think he did an outstanding job on the stream and, and I don't think we have to worry about that anymore. We'll, we'll keep an eye on it. Uh, the, uh, the bathroom bid will go out, uh, tomorrow. I started and was trying to get it finished this afternoon, but didn't. Uh, there will be six invitees. The pre-bid walkthrough is a week from today. And the bids are due on, uh, Wednesday, October 5th. And I'll send you a complete bid package as well as copies of the, uh, cover letters to the, the, the vendors. Uh, the, uh, proposal to pave, I will try and have that out by the end of next week along with the, uh, the, uh, proposal for, uh, the landscaping. And, uh, I will, I will take a shot at, at the landscaping bid. Jennifer, I had mentioned, we need to, to be specific. I've, I've been burnt before in bids, so if we want him to plant beds, we want, we need to say we want uh, 400, uh, cell packs in these different beds. We don't want to just say plant the bed because they might give us 10 flowers, they might give us 100 flowers. So we, we need to be a little more specific there. Uh, but I think that'll work. And the other thing I think I mentioned is a lot of landscapers, uh, do not have a pesticide applicator's license, which is required, uh, to put down fertilizers. Uh, that's why a lot of people use lawn doctor or one of those services. Uh, in the bid, I'll ask if they have the pesticide, uh, license. And, uh, and then we'll go from there. If we have to hire a separate vendor for that, uh, we will.
Yeah, just to interject, I think we can use organic fertilizer, so I don't think that will be an issue. I think that's
Well, I have one even
Industry change we can affect.
Well, so this board historically did away with like chemicals, like there's no more treating. You know, you don't see the yellow signs on the
Right, yes.
property anymore. Um, and, and I know that being ecologically sensitive here, we wouldn't really use anything unless we absolutely had to. Um, and, and that i-is even like, you know, like it's a delicate balance because we want to maintain the tree health, but we don't want to disturb and interfere with the trees. Um, it's a good analogy for the board, like everything should be able to sustain itself out there with minimal, uh, intervention from us. And, uh, and so, Bill, less is always going to be more.
Yes, I, I only mentioned that because Jennifer had suggested that in her, uh, suggestions about the grounds contract. So I put it in, but if
Right.
not, we will leave it out or, or specify organic, uh, fertilizers, no chemicals. That's not a problem.
Yeah, okay.
Just want to cover all the bases.
That sounds great.
Okay. What else? Uh, we've called the plumber, there's a leak in, uh, one of the bathrooms. It's a minor leak. And we also had a letter from the town about, uh, testing the backflow preventers. And he may be doing that, uh, this Saturday. I'll, I'll let Martha know as soon as it's scheduled. Uh, we, I did get a toilet seat actually for the, uh, the children's bathroom. I found it right in Chapaka Hardware. Who, who'd have guessed?
Great.
Uh, and, uh, the soap dispenser should arrive either today or tomorrow, and then they'll be able to open the bathroom until we do the full renovation, but it'll be usable.
That's great. That's really fantastic. Thank you, Bill.
Okay, and, uh, I think that's about it. Any questions?
Bill, I would add, Liz, we spoke about the resurfacing of the southern portion of the parking lot. And Bill, I think you're going to construct an RFP.
Yes, I, I thought I mentioned that. I, I tried.
Okay.
By the end of next week.
Right, right, thank you. Um, so are you, do you, I don't know how long it, from the time someone bids to the time they show up with the asphalt. Are we still, we still feel like we have enough time?
Yeah, the, the plants stay open till like the second week in December, first week in December, so we'll be all right.
Okay, all right, excellent. Yeah, no, we, um, the statue looks awesome. The parking lot, not so much, so we're
Right.
There a little, little, little at a time, um, but certainly I like looking up at that statue better than all right.
And I've reached out to the, uh, garbage company. They haven't made an appointment yet. I'll jump on them again tomorrow. But I measured and I think we can get those three dumpsters back in that little corral in the corner where they used to be. I think we can arrange that. We may have to put a little pad in there, but I, they'll still be in sight, but not out in the middle of the parking lot. So I think
Yeah, no, I mean, that
A lot better.
No, that is 100 times better if we can move them there, because then they're tucked away. They're visible, but they're not in the middle property hanging out in what looks to be, you know, just weird, uh, location. All right, um, and I know we had talked about asking about single stream as well, if that
I will bring that up to them, but I, once I realize I can get the three dumpsters in there, I think we're fine.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I don't know if it had to do with backup camera, no, like backup beeping noises or what the actual it's hard for me to say what.
No, it's like they have to back up now. When they empty the, the garbage.
Right.
They still have backup horns. They have to back up after they dump it. Then they pull head in, dump it in their truck, and then they got to back out, so you still get the beep in the morning.
Right, so we're, so, yeah, so it will be no different. It should be no different. Okay, excellent. Um, Dana, we have, we're surrounded by neighbors. Um, obviously the church is a big property on the one side, but over here we have a lot of different neighbors. And so we're always, um, trying to be really cognizant of the noise, uh, that we might create or the visual disturbances if we're doing construction, not to, not to let, um, them leave their pallets or anything on our, um, property. Because it, it's stressful for the neighborhood, which we can appreciate. We don't want this property to be a dis- dis- array anyways. All right, um, great, too. So building and grounds, I'm feeling like there's been a lot of good progress. Yeah.
Um, okay, I, I don't think it technically falls under building and grounds and you're going to revise the committees. Um, but, um, we, just to be forthcoming, we have talked about initiating an RFP with respect to physical security and IT security. That may move forward.
Right, right, we're having some of those conversations, or not as a board, but with Martha and staff. Yes, okay. Um, that's great. So for policy, uh, we have one policy we're going to, um, renew this evening. It's in the packet. It is the CIRC policy, um, and
I'm going to excuse myself.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Bill.
Bye.
Okay, so the CIRC policy, the, the the policy has been revised so that the table, which used to only get revised if we brought the policy to a board meeting, can be revised by staff. And then annually or however often we review this policy, we would then approve the, the newest table. Um, so when you look at, um, the materials that are circulating, we're responsible for those materials. They're part of what the library owns. So if those materials, if everybody took out, you know, 100 books and never brought them back, then we might not, you know, so, so we're responsible for the CIRC policy in the sense that, you know, it is one mechanism to make sure materials come back. Um, and it's all, but it also, you know, it's Marge loves to say, it's like when you, it's a reminder to bring your book back and an incentive that we're not trying to punish you with the fine. It's a mechanism that if there wasn't a fine, then the materials might not come back. So we have kept, uh, we have kept our fine structure. Now, a lot of libraries in Westchester have moved away from this. And during our last budget cycle, we also talked about d-dissolving fines. And I think, uh, I'm optimistic that we are going to dissolve fines, but we will always have a CIRC policy. And we will always have to have, what does the item cost us if you don't ever bring it back? And do we want to collect that from you? So this policy, um, you know, is going to bridge us for this period of time. I know we're approving fines and I just, that's why I wanted to stop and say we're not on trend with where we want to be in terms of the library world. But the fine money is revenue, like, so we, so we had to make some trade-offs. And we didn't feel like in the last budget that we
I don't see the need to get rid of fines just because of what else is.
Well, that's the other thing. So it's a healthy dialogue in terms of what we think. You know, we've had directors who have said the kids in this town don't have any other place to be responsible, let them pay their fines. You know, we've had, so everybody has an opinion about what is right or wrong. It's a hot topic in the library world. Last go around, we deferred it to this board. So we said, you know what, we like the idea, but not enough to take, to give up that revenue and to give that to the community. So if it becomes a thing that makes sense, it'll happen. If not, it won't. It's, but I just wanted to kind of give you guys that context while we're looking at this policy. Um, so that you understand that, you know, I'm sure you all saw like the city libraries showing how they don't have fines. And then the book from 1950s
Gets returned.
Comes returned and, you know, and so, and they have all these cute stories. So it's very, you know, it's a very trendy thing right now. Um, it also does help in, um, it has been proven to lift, um, circulation of materials in, you know, so there's lots of considerations, but for today.
Did, during COVID, did they lift fines?
They didn't assess any fines.
Didn't it?
So during, during COVID, nobody could really, we didn't want anyone returning books because that would have created a burden. Then can you touch them? Can you not? What do you do with them? Who's working to, you know? So during COVID, fines were suspended, so nobody was, no, you just brought your stuff back after. And there's also another mechanism that, um, you were probably here for the, there was like a amnesty day. So, um, and I had asked about an amnesty day. And, and one of our former directors was like, oh, if we do that every year, we might have to get the books back in between. So there are ways that you can offer, um, opportunities for those of you that don't know what amnesty day. It's like one day in the year where if you bring your books back that day, they, you, you, your fines are wiped out, but you miss it. The next day you come back, you still owe your fines. Um, so again, that's another thing that, you know, maybe in this community, we would rather do an annual amnesty day to make sure that in June, all the books come back before the kids leave for the I don't, whatever, whatever it is. But for this particular one, we've changed, we've added in the Chromebooks, the hotspots. Um, and set, and the staff has set these, uh, set the, the fine and the, um,
Martha clarified that there would be a replacement fee though.
Yes. Yes, so all of that, and, and we've talked at length with librarians. My understanding is they're very good at, if you're taking out an expensive item, they'll usually tell you, hey, be careful. This is, you know, a more significant thing that you're borrowing. Um, and obviously this library is here for our community. So if someone could not pay the fine, we would want them to approach our librarians and have that conversation. Um, so that's another thing. We're not here trying to take fines from anyone that doesn't feel comfortable paying them. Um, so, so we have so I'm not going to read through the whole policy. Hopefully you guys had a chance to do that. Um, this is an existing policy that we are now, um, what do we call that? Updating, so it's going to have a new approved bot date. Um, so we'll, we'll re-adopt this right now. So
Was that handed out?
It's, it's in the, it's in the big packet.
That's Jean-Telson? I don't know.
Okay. So we just specify cards, the patron responsibility, forgotten cards, reserves, renewals. It just outlines, um, all of the information and, you know, that you have privacy, all that stuff. I actually just did curbside for the first time this week. Amazing. Just done curbside.
During the pandemic.
During the pandemic, okay, um, so, curbside's awesome, you don't have to decide today that you want curbside, but when your book comes in that you wanted to put on hold, cause it wasn't here, um, you can then go online and fully digitally request it and have it delivered magic in a bag at the front door, you don't have to come in the library, you don't have to park the car, you just, your book is there right out front, grab it off the table, um.
Staff is okay, continue on, it's not a.
Yes, so it is an additional, um, offering. Um, and at this point, it's a standard, it's pretty much across, uh, I think every, I don't know of any library that was able to take it away, um, cause I think the expectation is, this is just such a in incredible way to compete with other fast service, right? Like, what's better than showing up and your book is literally there with your name on it, but it's in a, um, opaque container, so no one can see. And it just says your name and you grab it and you go, and you're not, it's on your time, and the, and I think I got a text to my phone saying that they had prepared it, so um, I gave them a two-hour window and it was there an hour before the window, so.
Yeah, it's very efficient, I was wondering if additional burn with the staff or their.
Well, well-oiled.
By now. So, um, so that, so let's, let's go ahead, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the Chapacola Library Circulation Policy. I'm gonna look for a second, Jennifer's gonna second the motion. And you've had a chance to review it?
I just did.
Great, perfect, um, all in favor? I unanimous, okay, our CIRC policy is done, excellent, exciting stuff, guys. Um, so now we're gonna get to your personnel actions. And I'm looking at Bill's. On report. Okay. Alright, I'm gonna make the motion, and then if someone wants to second these, we'll do this quickly. So, I make a motion that we appoint Delara Higgins to the position of part-time library clerk effective September first at the rate of seventeen fifty-two an hour. Do I have a second?
Second.
Pam is seconding, all in favor, I unanimous. Uh, I make a motion that we appoint Eliza Fink to the position of page effective September ninth at the rate of fifteen dollars and forty-five cents an hour. Second is Jennifer, all in favor, is unanimous. I make a motion to appoint Cassidy Weddle to the position of computer page effective, uh, September twenty-first twenty-twenty-two at the rate of fifteen dollars and seventy-one cents per hour, do I have a second? Pam is seconding, all in favor, unanimous. Alright, I make a motion that we, uh, that we change the salary of Pages Ben Fine and Aaron Song uh, to fifteen dollars and forty-five cents an hour as of September sixth, twenty-twenty-two. Do I have a second? Second, Jennifer's seconding, all in favor, unanimous, okay, great, did we take care of everything that we needed? Yes, we did, okay, good, excellent. Okay, our personnel actions, um, for personnel tonight, we are also discussing ourselves, we're gonna do that behind closed doors. We're gonna, um, we're gonna put on a screen that says we've gone into executive session, after we make the motion and go into executive session, then we will go into a separate room to have our, uh, closed meeting. And then after we talk through, uh, what we need to in terms of our positions a- and, um, and our, and our expertise, um. And for anyone from the public, we've looked up the open meetings law, we are one hundred percent in compliance. Then we'll come back into the public session, and we will, um, appoint our additional offices and, um, and I'm not sure, we'll see about how far we get with the committee stuff, and then we're gonna adjourn, so we won't be doing any public comment at the end of this meeting, and we won't be, we'll just be coming back into public session to end the meeting, I just wanna make that clear, so um, everyone's welcome to stay on the Zoom if they would like to, but our, for the purposes of commenting, your next public comment opportunity, uh, will be on, uh, the next public session, which as of right now is in, um, October, do October, what, do we have, I'm sorry, I only printed the first page, and it didn't print the next meeting for me, I'm about the eighteenth, so the next official, uh, board meeting is on the eighteenth, so that's where unless we have another meeting prior, which we may, um, and we'll let you guys know with appropriate notice, that would be your next opportunity, so at this point, um, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session if someone wanted to make it. Do I have a second? Pam, all in favor? Hi, okay, then at eight fifty-seven, we're going into executive session. Alright.
Can I have a motion to re-enter the public session? I make a motion to re-enter the public session at nine forty-five PM. Will you second it?
I second the motion. All in favor?
I.
I, okay, uh, the Chapacola Library Board of Trustees, public session is back in session, and, um, we, we have just discussed our, uh, or how we're gonna organize ourselves. Uh, normally, we appoint our officers in January. We are doing, uh, we are doing appointments, uh, today to, uh, because we have new trustees filling partial terms, okay, um, so I will, um, so I, so we are going to make a motion to appoint Pam Moskowitz to secretary. Uh, Ryan Cook to finance. And to, to the finance officer, and, uh, Jennifer Fahy to the vice president. Do I have a second? For the motion?
A second.
Brian seconding the motion, all in favor? I, okay, so we now have all of our offices filled, thank you, everybody.
And now you have to point to the committee.
Right, so now I just want to, um, I'm going to, uh, so we have three standing committees, uh, for the finance committee, Ryan Cook will chair. And Dana Wu will sit on that committee with him, uh, for the, uh, building and grounds. Jennifer Fahy will chair, and I will continue to sit on that committee with you. Uh, for safe, uh, for the policy and bylaws, Pam Moskowitz will chair, and Jennifer Fahy will sit with you on that committee. And then we had previously, um, and we're going to, uh, right now have the ad hoc committee of safety and security. To which I will appoint Jennifer Fahy as the chair, and Pam Moskowitz will assist her on that committee. So we have one ad hoc committee, we, we discharged the other committee earlier tonight, so we have one ad hoc, three standing, and we all know where we are going to be focused, uh, moving forward uh, through the end of the year, so, thank you, everybody, um. I'll entertain a motion to close the public session, if someone wants to do that with the time.
I'll make a motion, close the public session at nine forty-eight.
I second the motion.
Dana seconding, all in favor? I, excellent, thank you, everyone, thank you to everyone who joined us this evening. We will be back next month.
Thank you, everyone.
This meeting's adjourned.